How y'all doing?
It's now just after seven. Welcome to the work session of the City of Lancaster. It's Tuesday, October the 12th, 2025. I'll open our meeting with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please bow with me. Father, we ask that you keep us ever mindful and ever grateful for the peace we have among ourselves and in our community. Help us to build on that each and every day so that we can be a part of your kingdom and bring your kingdom to our community. Father, please be with us as we make decisions. Help us to make good decisions after thoughtful consideration. Help us and keep us in all things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Hood. Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sal.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor. Mayor Divin.
Here. So we do have a forum and can officially run the city's business. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens' comments?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have any employee comments?
We also do not.
Very good. Good to see Mr. McGriff with us. Glad you're on the mend. Very good. All right. We have our minutes for our July 22nd, 2025 meeting. Starting at page one at Seek. So if y'all take a look at those and see if there's any changes that need to be made in our minutes prior to motion. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Councilmember Harris moves.
Second.
Councilmember Sal seconds. And that's a move which will approve the minutes. Motion is now on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Mayor Divin?
Yes. That's our approval. Now moving to item six, Resolution 25-17, a resolution authorizing the public possession and consumption of beer and wine at the James R. Clark Memorial Cyclical Cell Foundation Lancaster Satellite Office, Ninth Annual Family Day Cyclical Cell Festival. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lancaster Satellite Office of the James R. Clark Memorial Cyclical Cell Foundation will be hosting its ninth annual Family Day Cyclical Cell Festival on Saturday, September 27th, in downtown from 12:30 to 9:00 PM. The festival will begin at 12:30 with a trail ride line dancing tutorial. The parade will begin at 2:00 and the festival will begin at 4:00 from 4:00 to 9:00 with fireworks at the end. The resolution presented calls for an event area that will allow for public possession and consumption of beer and wine between Dunlap Street and Elman Chesterfield and Catawba and White Street, the usual area where we have our event. As always, as in the past, businesses that are front or within this event area that are allowed to sell on-premise consumption of alcohol beverages from the South Carolina Department of Revenue Alcohol Beverage Licensing are able to participate if they wish. Ms. Doris Ely from Cyclical Cell Foundation is here. If council has more question regarding the festival itself.
I just have one question. With the consumption at city events, there are usually designated cups to be able to know that individuals are of age to consume. Are we going to, are you going to have special cups for that for?
Yeah, I can answer that question. They will use the cup that we've used for other festivals, plus there'll be wristbands to you. We have extra left over.
So we're actually one block down, right?
Yes. This year, instead of having, last year they had it on the Catawba Street here. In the past, they had other areas. But this year, we're going to utilize our, the old post office parking lot that's now a city property.
Market Square.
Market Square.
Very good. All right. Some motion, I mean, matters now on the floor for discussion.
One other question, Ms. Mayor. So the designated area will be from the post office to Dunlap Street?
Well, the, yes. Basically Chesterfield up to Dunlap and from White over to Catawba.
Okay. And it will be marked like we do for our events?
Yes. We will have signs of no alcohol beyond this point. A sign that says, you know, must have wristband to consume or public possession. You must have some system to that effect.
Okay. Chief, everything okay with you when it comes? Okay.
We, we, this Ely, she's great to work with. She's a sweet person and it's always a good event with her. So, you know, we, we've worked through it and we expect it to be another great event.
Okay.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Councilmember Marsh moves to approve, seconded by Councilmember Miller. Motion is now on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call to approve.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Yes. Now we have, moving to ordinances. We have a number of second readings, ordinances to amend, the official zoning map, and we'll just take them in order. Though, I guess it's, well, all are connected except, except A, correct?
That's correct.
So let's look at ordinance 25-10, second reading, ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Lancaster, South Carolina, as to rezone one parcel of land identified as tax book number 0068K-0C-001.00 totaling 1.041 acres located in the general vicinity of 217 Nichols Road. Mr. Schrader.
Good evening. Yes, I have no new information concerning this request. It's still staff recommendation to approve the request to rezone this property to R6. And we have to assign zoning to this property as part of our annexation process. So we recently annexed the property, now we have assigned zoning, and zoning is consistent with other, other properties in that area.
And basically, the configuration of this actual piece of property is really, not really conducive to zoning it any other way than this. And there's really no other use you could have of it except the small house there, I guess. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve 25-010, second reading?
Then we'll make a difference with the status of this.
Well, it's just, I think it's just in the title pages, not on the ordinance itself. I think the, if I'm not mistaken, the.
You are correct. Ordnance does that.
Yeah, ordinance is correct.
Yeah, the ordinance is correct.
Yeah. So Councilmember Marsh moves to approve.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Miller. Matters now on the floors. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call to approve.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Mayor Divin?
Yes. Now, we want to take up all of these together as, in terms of your explanation, Mr. Schrader, because they're all connected otherwise, correct?
Yes.
And then we'll then vote on each one individually after your explanation of the ordinance 25-11, ordinance 25-12, ordinance 25-13, and ordinance 25-14. So you have the floor.
Yeah, so we'll start with 25-11. And all of the properties were recently annexed. And the intent of the annexation is to build a or develop a 900 home cluster, southern region, on the southern part of the city. The first one in ordinance 25-11 is how they actually make connection to the city. So in order to annex into the city, you have to do some changes. So they were able to get this, this portion of the property annexed into the city. I'm just going to point it out on the map. We're talking about this little small piece of property here that's in pink. So that's the connection between the city and the rest of the property that was annexed into the city. So as we were looking at the zone classifications in that area, we found that the D3 general commercial district was in keeping with the care of that corridor along Mainway Drive. So that would be in the 25-11. Now, 25-12 and 25-13, let me make sure I got this right. Let me look at the map here. So it's going to be 25-12 and 25-13. These two pieces of property, the one that's containing the 38.5 acres and the other one contains 304 acres. This is where the, where they're proposing to develop these 900 homes. There's no new information. There's no new information in regards to this. Council approved first reading during their last meeting of both properties. And the last, the twenty-five-fourteen is the commercial piece to this, this is along the Airport Road corridor. So the plans are for future commercial development along the Airport corridor. Also, there's a twenty-acre piece that the developers planning on donating to the city to use for recreational purposes or emergency services. And council also approved the first reading of that one after their last meeting. And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Streeter, if you wouldn't mind, I know we have the individual maps, but if you wouldn't mind on the big map showing us again that expansion, the city's expansion there?
So this was the initial connection point. This is the Iglesia property. And then we have the, uh... The thirty-eight acres in here, then we have the three-hundred-and-four acres here. This is, uh, this is, it backs up to Pooby Farm here, and on this side as well. It extends down Hillcrest Avenue all the way out to Airport Road. This three-hundred-and-four acres here and then about thirty-eight acres here. The other piece, the commercial pieces here along the Airport corridor, it starts basically at the Founder's ATM and extends down to almost, well, about halfway into Hillcrest Avenue, just a little bit south of the driving range here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the golf course, that's right. And over here off of Edgeport is where they're planning on donating the twenty acres. That's off of Edgeport Drive here.
And show us where, where two-hundred is in relation.
This is Highway two-hundred here. Right here.
Which is four-lane.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Streeter, I mean, I know they haven't, what, what we're, we're giving a zoning classification, but it's really not the end of the matter in terms of what the design's gonna be, how the design's gonna be, what the traffic study's gonna show, what they're gonna have to do in terms of road widening. All of that is to come, correct?
Well, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any road widening. We've already done the TIA Traffic Impact Analysis. We've got the representatives here to talk about that, what, what that's gonna look like. We have a, a rendering of what we, what we think it's gonna be, but they're moving forward with submitting the preliminary flat, and so we'll start seeing a more fine look for this development.
So you're telling me on Airport Road, right, um, right now, that we really don't have any plans for turning lanes? Is that, you're not telling me that?
Well, there may be some turning lanes installed, but I think you were talking about why.
Well, I mean, I, maybe that's, I'm not sure, but, but you're gonna have turning lanes that bring it off of the main travel into this, to the development?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I think that, that's the concern that, of the individuals that are already living on Airport Road with the amount of traffic that is going to increase with that, I think the turning lanes are gonna be very important. From my understanding, there's gonna be four different ways that you can get into this subdivision that is going to be developed. And I think it's important that, as we look at that, we want to see the safety of, of the ability to get in and out of the subdivision, as they have addressed a number of cars that currently travel on Airport Road. And from my understanding, we're already providing services. They had a car accident out there a couple of weeks, and the city had to respond to that?
Yes, the city far from rescue, we respond to accidents outside of city limit, but within that area, yes.
But I guess my thing with two-hundred being where two-hundred is, which is just, you know, directionally, I'm sorry, Keith, it gets us to the north, right? Or to the?
On the development?
Yeah.
The hundred feet to the north.
Right. But, so that's a four-lane with multiple, multiple turns, you know, out of, once you, you know, I know, I know, going into that, where, where Airport Road is, you, the, the flow of traffic either way, after the fact, you've got a pretty substantial, somewhat underutilized road to move that traffic. So I think that the concern is, is, as Madam Chairman pointed out, is, you know, getting it from the development onto that four-lane. And I think that's, that's where, I, I think the size of it seems to me, and having remembered the, the utility of that, of two-hundred, that it really is not even close to being overcongested on two-hundred. Do you have any comment?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name yet. Tell me your name again.
So Weston Bowles, work for W D X and Malder. So that's answered like the traffic impact analysis. So that has been submitted at S E B O T, and that has been approved. So the turn lanes that were approved in that was, so you come off of two-hundred along the Airport Road, there will be a left turn lane first on the Edgeport, that's an existing road. Couple hundred feet down into, or off of two-hundred on Airport Road, then we'll have another left turn lane into our first entrance, and then another left turn lane into our second entrance on Airport. So we will be putting three turn lanes out there on Airport Road.
And what about, like, off of, down in Pooby Farm? Is, is it gonna be an exit way coming out of Pooby?
There's a, Hillcrest goes to the middle of the front, yeah, so we'll have, and that's a, I guess there is some existing subdivision in that area. We'll have two connections onto that road. The TIA didn't come up in the report much, just to leave them. What was body of the traffic that's out there.
So it gets downhill crest, you know, it, it goes further down two-hundred and comes out, and there's a way to get out of off the hill crest down, isn't there?
So there's an entrance on Hillcrest and then the, here, I can actually.
Yeah. It's an entrance on Hillcrest out, off of two-hundred.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah. But my concern is the airport entrance. Are you gonna be able to make a left turn, left or right turn on that, on Airport Road into the development, or?
Yes, so this is Airport Road right here. This, so, I can't imagine what that, right here is two-hundred. So Airport Road comes down through here. So this is Edgeport, which is the first road. We'll have a left turn that we're adding here. Then coming down here, right, this, right here is the golf course.
Okay.
Area. And this is, I'm pretty sure it's a golf course lane. It's an existing road right next to the, that runs down the side of the golf course. So we're putting an entrance there, which would have a left turn in, into our development there, and then we come farther down and have another left turn into here that we'll be putting it. So we'll be widening out to three, one section, about three of those.
Okay.
So this is in the area of Golf Course, what it was here.
And of course, where the golf course is, there's no turning in or turning out all the way from the?
So, yeah, from Edgeport all the way down to here, there's, the golf course, uh, will turn in, so there's a T intersection right now, turning toward, toward the intersection.
Okay.
Some extra stoplights?
No extra stoplights. The TIA did call out. There's Springdale on Airport Road, which is not the two-hundred intersection, the one right there. Thanks to it, they are doing some signal modifications. Put a better Tom, that signal with the two-hundred intersection, but no actual signals.
So when you did say that Department of Transportation reviews the state, tell, tell me a little bit of what that review means.
Yes, so it's a technical report that has basically for them to look kind of holistically what they'll do, if we showed how many units were in, in the subdivision, and then they actually go in and analyze where that, those trips go and give a kind of a allocation. So the allocation then will be run through a model which determines what the, what the improvements on the road looks would be needed to bring the, keep the road at the level services operating right now. So it's making sure that what we do doesn't make the road operate at a worse level service.
And what is that, I mean, is there, there used to be kind of A, B, C, D. I don't know if they still do that.
Yeah, they still do it that way. I don't have any. Exactly what that was, but that, that is. And then I can tell you as well, the TIA was run for one-thousand-six-hundred units. This plan right here, nine-hundred. So they have no intentions that, that are in how long about nine-hundred. So the TIA was running for more driving potential.
All right, any other questions of the traffic engineer? All right, very good. All right, any other questions of Mr. Streeter? Thank you so much, Weston.
And Mr. Streeter, this was the recommendation of the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, the planning commission, after conducting the public hearing of each one of these requests, their recommendations will approve each one as submitted. And this is simply to assign zoning tonight, not proving anything other than you've done.
So there'll be, I guess, what, there's gonna be other discussions about what and how and when on down the road, right?
Yes.
So is there any indication, I guess after they get zoned, and is there any indication of when they'll begin work as of yet? Can you say?
As far as?
Well, um.
Yeah, the infrastructure.
It, it will be a long process, I'm sure, I'm listening to that as well, but we are planning to submit what we call the next, one hundred flat, which will kind of outline what would work best, what is lost, what is what the geometry, and the city will then review that, and we have to take that to the planning board, correct? And then after that, we'll have to submit the cluster request, which goes to the board of some people. And after that, then we have to start actually the full design of this subdivision, so where every store man was at, where every sewer man was at, all that kind of stuff. And that will take some considerable amount of time as well. So I can't imagine that you're gonna see development on the actual property for another year at least, and it could be well longer than that, just on how long the approval process goes. We're, we're still a ways away, and there is more, some more process still.
So they're just gonna make good-looking houses, right? I mean, I've been going up and down the green, going back and forth, there's ugly houses being built.
And I guess.
Just big squares and nothing to them.
I'm not building homes.
I'm not.
And I, and I guess my concern is, is that, you know, we're looking at a substantial timeframe, and with some of the issues nationally, I wouldn't want to see this go on and not be developed in a significant timeframe, because we're, we're gonna be stretching our police, fire, uh, at, at this point, and, you know, I wouldn't want to see ten years and it's still not developed. And we still have concerns with, you know, how we're stretching our, you know, fire department and police department, because, you know, with that development, that's gonna put an increased load again on our police and fire, making sure that the amenities that you wanted when, by coming into the city, those things are there.
I think that was some of the developer's wanting to come in from the land, to the city, to assist in some of the work. I mean, it, it is a larger development, but it's not, it's not gonna be there in a.
Oh, no, I'm not, well, I, I agree, I, I do, I understand that, but, you know, you know, when we talk about in our, uh, plans that we're looking at to, you know, bring more rooftops, so we can bring more, uh, factories, jobs, things of that to our community, those amenities that we hear our constituents talk about, I, I think that's very important as we look at the timeframe this is gonna take.
And I, I can tell you that the developers forced our, has already a couple of projects in the city, so I mean, that, they're looking to invest, have to get some of the, all the projects.
All right. Again, thank you. And I think the other, ultimately, the other thing that's quite interesting there is the, is the spur of additional development on the commercial side along that two-hundred corridor that has kind of been aced and that happened because, partly because of Edge Water. And they, they're definitely coming this way to get their services and everything else. So it would just be up to us to keep encouraging people to annex on into the city. Might as well, this group's gonna be there, so. All right, are there any other questions of, of Mr. Streeter at this time? Well, I'm excited about it. I, I think it's a great opportunity for this city to, it's gonna expand, it's gonna change this, but I think it's a good, good thing that's, that's happening all around us. Oh, and the other thing is, these, all these folks that are gonna live here are gonna get along very well with each other, and they're gonna be very safe with their cooking and that sort of thing, right? Try not to increase too much pressure on the police or fire. All right, any other comment that's helpful? Or any other questions? I hear none. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, second reading of an ordinance to amend the city official zoning map of the city of Lancaster, South Carolina as to rezone one parcel of land identified as tax map number zero-zero-eight-one-zero-dash-zero-A-dash-zero-two-three-point-zero-zero totaling five-point-seven-seven-six acres located in the general vicinity of one-four-one-four. We already did that one. No, we hadn't done that one. One-four-one-four Lynnwood Drive owned by El Salo Iglesia. And this one is, of course, is the connector he talked about first. So let's, that, let's take up that matter first. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Councilmember Syle moves to approve, second by councilmember Miller. All right, motion is now on the floor. So now we have an opportunity to discuss it as a motion on the floor. And this is a commercial district, correct?
Yes.
Which is what it already is, really. All right, any other discussion? Hear none, roll call to approve?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Mayor Dubin?
Yes. Now ordinance twenty-five dash one-two, twelve, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Lancaster, South Carolina as to rezone one parcel of land identified as tax map number zero-zero-eight-six-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-one-point-zero-zero totaling three-hundred-four-point-six-three acres located in the general vicinity of Airport Road and Hillcrest Avenue and owned currently by the Leroy Springs and Company.
Some move.
Councilmember Miller moves to approve.
Second.
Second, councilmember Harris. Motion is now on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Streeter, do you know when the actual sale of the property will? Mr. Streeter, do you know when the actual sale of the property will occur from, is it still in the name of Leroy Springs, or does that happen after the zoning happens?
That typically happens after all of the approvals.
All right.
It depends on when they're from the person.
Okay. But what we're doing is, regardless of who owns this piece of property, it's now in the city and it's now going to be zoned off that team.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments on ordinance twenty-five twelve? Hearing none or roll call to approve?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember South?
Yes.
Mayor Vinnie?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Lancaster, South Carolina as to rezone one parcel of land identified as tax map number zero-zero-eight-seven dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-one point zero-zero, totaling thirty-eight-point-five acres located in the general vicinity of Hillcrest Avenue and Watts Drive, and owned currently by Leroy Springs and Company Incorporated. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash thirteen?
So move.
Council, councilmember Harris moves, seconded by councilmember Marsh. Motion is now on the fourth floor for further discussion. All right, is there any other discussion with regard to, uh, this particular parcel? Hearing none or roll call to approve?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember South?
Yes.
Mayor Vinnie?
Yes. And finally, ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen, second reading, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Lancaster, South Carolina as to rezone one parcel of land identified as tax map number zero-zero-eight-six-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-one-one point zero-one, totaling forty-eight-point-two acres located in the general vicinity of Edgeport Drive and Airport Road and owned by Elliott White Springs Foundation. Do I hear a motion to approve? Councilmember South moves to approve.
Second.
Second, councilmember Miller. All right, is there any further discussion, any further questions? Hearing none or roll call to approve?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember South?
Yes.
Mayor Vinnie?
Yes. All right, thank you, Mr. Streeter, and thank you all for being with us and, and helping us understand location, anyway. All right, that's the last item on our agenda, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Marsh. Roll call to approve?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember South?
Yes.
Mayor Vinnie?
Yes. We are adjourned, thank you all.